There's nothing to check. There's nothing to check there. The gas furnaces you need to check. You make sure that the heat exchangers are okay. And the piping going outside is all right if it's an eighty percent or less. In other words, if it's a ninety percent actually, then you don't even need to check that part of it, but you need to check the heat exchangers, okay? So if you have... That building has electric baseboard, okay? It has electric hot water heater. We don't need to have that inspection again, okay? And there's people... There's quite a few people here that own buildings that get that... Already did that inspection done, so... And, you know, and going back to the water just a little bit. Everybody here, I'm assuming, picks up their water bill. I don't look at how much it is. I look on my rental properties. I love to see how many units that I'm paying for. If that unit varies more than a point, I'm going down and I call my tenants and say, "Hey, I need to check your toilets because that's the biggest use of water, that's when they're not working." So if I have a water leak, you know, at that address, I'm the one that's gonna show up for it quickly, but at the same time, if I see that in my water bill, I'm gonna take care of it because that's an easy way to correct any expense on that. So also, this Friday is the... My annual thing that we do, and a lot of us do, is that I have the two gas furnaces that I do have, okay, are being inspected by a licensed contractor, okay? We changed the filters. On Friday, we changed all the filters and all the furnaces and checked the heat exchangers and the piping going out and going out. So someone's gotta tell me how... I'm not gonna have to have that re-inspected again. I mean, I can bring a bill in and say, "Here, I got a bill. Here's my receipt for paying for my furnace to be inspected and already done." The next thing, I think that pretty well covers it. And I'll take another example, is that I have two on Hart Avenue that belongs to the condo association there. They're electric heat, okay? The water is... If the water gets shut off there, that affects eighteen people, uh, eighteen residents, okay? So, and again, the city's gonna know when that happens, okay? And it's... So it's not gonna be like a big secret if the water gets shut off. It just that the information just has to be passed on, passed on to the people that need to know this. The only other thing that I couldn't really figure out, how to settle the mold inspection, okay? But since I did that for a while in my business, you know that about eighty-five percent of the mold is self-inflicted. It's not just something that comes along, okay? People stacking boxes and cardboard up against closets in the corners will create that if the humidity's too high in the house, okay? Not using the exhaust fan in the bathroom, okay? But where do you draw the line at on mold inspection? You're saying that you wanna protect the renters from mold. What about the people that have private residence that have mold? So are you gonna inspect every home and every house in Fostoria for mold so that you treat everybody equal and not pick out the good people that are trying to do this right and say that, "We're gonna inspect your..." Bob, we wanna inspect all yours for mold. And if I have a resident that doesn't clean properly, which I don't have to worry about, okay? But if you have one that doesn't clean the bathroom properly, you could and could end up with mold. More likely, it's just gonna be mold. So that's, you know, where I'm at. Where I'm at, with that and quite a few other people, one that I talked to this week, about where do you draw the line? Quit trying to punish the good people to get to bad people. And also, just a little bit of that, I looked up. We already have stuff in line at the city. We already have. Go get them. If they're bad, go get them. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
My name's Greg Berkmeier. I live at eight nine oh two Tasha Row nineteen, McComb. I have three that I rent. They'll have gas. I was at one last weekend to make sure the furnace was okay. But I checked it out, but I couldn't turn it on, didn't have gas on. I can't control the tenant on if they have gas or not. You know, they don't wanna pay the bill, so they didn't have it on. It's not cold enough yet, but they said they're gonna get it turned on. I put a smoke detector in that house, a smoking carbon dioxide detector in that house in April. When I went and worked on it there last weekend, it was off the wall, battery out. I can't control what my tenants do inside their house. They pay their own water bill. I get an owner's copy. I can't control if they don't have the money to pay the water bill. I... Every single one is always late. I always have a water bill that is late from my tenants, close enough where they're gonna get the water shut off. One property, I don't even... I have a sewer bill because there's no water. I have a well. And ironic thing about that property was, we finally got sewer and water access down there about eight years ago. About ten... Well, when the zoning lady before the two guys was here, when she first started, I got a notice that I had my property condemned for lack of water. So I called her up. I said, "What's this?" Oh, the health department. The trailer was empty, by the way, and I just used the garage. And, "Well, there's no running water. There's never been a record of running water." I said, "Yeah, there hasn't been. There's no city water or sewer in that street." And she's... What you're trying to tell me is in town, don't have no city water or sewer? I said, "Yeah." And so I called the health department. I said, "I can turn the breaker on. We have water." "Okay, pull the signal down." But it's the rules that are in the books. I mean, if they don't have running water through the water department, like Bob says, you got rules. You can get... Call us if you need it. The health department needs to go in and do an inspection. All you have to do is call us. We call a tenant. Twenty-four hours later, we can get somebody in there to look at it. You don't need to have all these separate rules. When you have regulations and ordinances already on the books stacked on top of each other. And then you're gonna have the zoning department run it. The offense against the zoning department is still short-staffed, but I own some vacant land on Hissam that was annexed in ninety-six into the city. It was out in the country. My dad owned it. We annexed it, never zoned. And I think it's at two thousand and sixteen, I had his own B2. No record of it. He couldn't find it. I said that he was looking. I said, "Call me." This was over a month ago. I haven't got a call back. So you're having a guy that's gonna run it that's overwhelmed already, and then you're gonna have more stuff thrown on him. I said, "I don't understand where this is going because we have..." If you have a bad landlord, house is falling apart, you have ordinances. You got the catch-all, peeling paint. You can go in there and cite him for peeling paint. There's an ordinance on peeling paint for exteriors. There's stuff in the books where you can go out and get those persons to comply with what you want them to comply with. You don't need another set of rules and regulations when you already got rules and regulations that you're not enforcing. That's the main thing here. I have no problem registering my property. I do have a problem with all these fees, the fines. Like, I can't control the smoke detector. I can't control the tenant taking it off the wall. It'd be a fine five hundred dollars a day. That's just insane. So, I mean, I have no problem registering my property, but I do have a problem with all these inspections that are useless. And who's gonna inspect? Who's your qualified person? You have to have a qualified person to do heating and air conditioning or heating. Home inspectors ain't qualified. They can say, "Yeah, it works or not." They're not qualified. I had a property where the... The praiser made a comment to the bank about some settling issues on the garage floor that I sold. And they said, "We don't want home inspectors inspecting. We need an engineer or a contractor." I said, "Well, I'm a contractor." She goes, "Conflict of interest." I said, "Call up your engineer, have him come down." And basically, I spent two hundred and fifty bucks to write on a piece of paper that says normal settling, no structural issues." So... But they don't want home inspectors. The banks do not want home inspectors to inspect stuff that is critical. So who's gonna do these inspections? It's gonna cost more than thirty-five dollars, a hundred dollars for the first unit, thirty-five dollars for every other to have a heating guy come in and look at your house. It's gonna cost more than that. Mold. I mean, when I bought that house that had that little structural issue, it had mold issues. I gutted the area, but my job, I do microbiological testing. I took samples and air samples on the mold, and yeah, where the basement stairs were, because the basement flooded because the power was off, the doors were closed, but that was awful mold. That got a gutted, but the rest of the house was fine. But I take care of those issues. But you take that mold sample, and you take it to an outside lab, you're gonna spend a couple hundred bucks to have that tested. You ain't gonna get by with no thirty-five dollars. So where we draw a line? And where do we draw the line where you have landlords and you have private citizens? Where do we draw that fine line? And what if you have a landlord that doesn't register? His house is in his name, he doesn't register as rental property. But he has multiple properties. There's a guy that... There's a guy that I know that has multiple properties in town and none of them are rented. He don't even live in there, pretty much. He lives in California. He has three houses in town, and none of them are rented. So you can't go by the audit sites saying, "Multiple properties, you must be a landlord." You can't do that because he's not a landlord. He just likes to have his property. So I don't know where... I don't know where to draw the line on what you guys... What this ordinance wants to do. Because as I said, if you have a guy that broken windows and stuff, there's ordinances on that too, already on the books. So why have more ordinances on top of ordinances on top of ordinances that none of them get enforced? So that's all. I don't have no issue... I don't have no questions on how or answers on how to take care of the bad landlords. I don't. I don't, because there's always ways they do loopholes around them. I just try to get everything... I mean, when I buy a house, I got it, I redo it. So I only have three of them. I can't do more than that, so... Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Josh, do you have any answers about some of this stuff that will be covered under zoning that wouldn't need to be on that list? Have you went through all that stuff yet?
We have. This is just for public comment, though, to council. This is just here for public comment to council.
Bill Serre, three oh one South Main Street. I was asking, where should we draw the line? It's drawn. It's our property. It's not yours. Government doesn't own properties. It's communist bullshit. That's all it is. This has been negatively received online. People have negatively received this. The last meeting, there was not a single person who spoke in favor of it from the public. This meeting, I assume, is going to be the same. So I don't know if you guys just wanna keep pushing it despite it being negatively received. The last time the mayor, oddly enough, not here, talked about predatory landlords is what we need to worry about in this town. I think we need to start worrying about predatory politicians. We're already making a way towards, you know, they're already doing backroom deals on this, closed-door meetings, I've heard. There's been closed-door meetings on this. And that's exactly the type of stuff that I keep saying is the problem. Most of the problems in this town have originated in this very room, and I'll reiterate that fact every single time. This is more of it. This is another problem being created by our local government. I've actually apologized to many of the other investors here in town because this is directed... I feel this is directed right at me. And I apologize to them because they shouldn't be involved, and it's just political BS, is all it is. I operate lower-end rentals. I do. I have some one-bedroom apartments that rent for under three hundred dollars. I'm not sure if there's another landlord in town. Maybe there is. Maybe one of you guys have properties that rent for that price. I've never raised the rent on anyone, not once, not a single time. There is at least a dozen places in this town that were vacant between two years and twenty years that because of my dealing in this situation now have families happily in those houses. At the same time, this local government has knocked down probably eight times as many houses. It's knocked down at least four schools. Government's very good at destroying things.
It's a whole different entity that tears down schools.
It's government.
No, it's the school system.
The school system.
The public school system.
Ran by...
Ran by administrators who are elected by the public, but they are not politicians.
They are government in my mind.
In your mind, maybe.
This will not add housing. This will decrease it. This is going to hurt people. It's already hurting people because I know some of the places have been staying vacant because they don't know what you guys are gonna do on this. If this is negatively received today, as it was the prior meeting, as it was online, are we just gonna keep pushing it? Is that the goal? Because that will cause further problems. That's all I have to say.
We're just here today to get comments. You all, we're not... We don't have the answers. We're just here to get comments. We don't appreciate getting yelled at either.
Don't appreciate you coming after our businesses either.
Talk without yelling.
Not yelling. Speak in my mind.
My name is Jill Philigheder. I'm at four oh two Escolton Street. And I'm going on a different perspective because I don't have any rental properties. But I'm intrigued about the concept that we have here, and I'm trying to root cause, analyze how we got to this point. Because my concern is, as I see that you're using, I hear Sandusky, maybe even Nelsonville, as your models for this project, but your models don't mirror anywhere near these two models you're talking about. You're looking at the end cap of this five hundred dollars. Neither one of these towns have that fee part incorporated in it. I'm all supportive about registering. Registry makes rational sense, so there's a registry marker. But as for inspections and other things, you have your ordinances in place. You know that you have that twenty-four-hour checkback period that you can do it. So I'm trying to understand, as we're root causing it, is the reason for special contractors to come in, picked by the city, that they choose, that they pick, so that the people that own property don't have the right to have their contractor come in? Like, you heard the other gentleman, he has someone who comes in every year. He can give you a piece of paper that validates the work was done. So why would we say, "No, that's not good enough. I need the people that we've picked," and I'm using council, "we've picked these set people. These are the only ones you can use." They might be my friends, they might not be, and I'm not saying that's how you would do it. But it gives the illusion and the appearance that the council is going to pick the people in their entourage to choose from, and that's not the way government should be doing it. It's not the way the council should be doing it. If you have people, good people, that have their rentals, that do their inspections and can show you proof of an inspection, then that should meet the requirement. As for the issue with getting in to go see a property, as you know, a lot of the tenants might not pay their rent. You have good, you have bad. They have avenues if they have an issue with their house that they can go and put it into escrow here in the courthouse. But they're not gonna go and do it because they don't have the money to put it in escrow. So are we going to say, "It's okay, don't pay your rent. We know that we have a process, but we're not gonna honor that process." You see what I'm saying? Because we know you can't afford it, but it's all right to make them come in and do inspections and do all this other stuff when they're not even getting their rent. Because you guys all know, it takes a lot to get an eviction anymore. It takes sometimes six to nine months to get somebody evicted for not paying their rent that have avenues. So why are we saying that we have to have people come in? That's the part I don't quite understand. I don't think a lot of the people here understand that because, as they say, we don't have the same for our private citizens. Our private citizens, who might not be keeping their place up, we don't do the same rules for them that we're gonna be doing for the landlords. And the landlords here, we have avenues, and that's all I needed to mention. And I mean, I don't understand the root cause part. There's got to be a root cause. You would not have brought this up if you hadn't already thought this process out. And I know it's comments right now. But transparency is the issue right now. You have concerned citizens who own property, who are looking at making a better community, offering housing. You have a few bad seeds. We understand that. But why are you being punitive to the entire group? And why are you not being transparent when you've got these guys saying, "It's not making any sense"? What is the root cause? What is the final concept when you have the ordinances in place? And I think that's what frustrates people because you're not being transparent. You guys are being very secretive in this process, and that is the concern. Thank you for your time.
Zeb Walters, two six six four Quarterly Road. So we left the last meeting open to the public, saying, "Bring any ideas that you have." So an idea that's myself and a few other investors have put together, we're gonna establish a Fostoria Investors Association. So it's gonna be a group of landlords, real estate investors, anybody interested in real estate investing for the community. We're working on bylaws right now, and there will be a code of ethics that everybody has to adhere to. So we feel like it's a valuable resource, education, training, networking amongst everybody in Fostoria, local real estate investors through Tiffin and Finley as well. But again, there will be a code of ethics baked into it, so we feel like it's a valuable resource. In order to get the resource, you have to play by the rules. So just one idea that we're pursuing, actively pursuing, we'll have established here shortly. Many of the folks probably behind me don't know about it yet, but if you're interested, feel free to come talk to me after this meeting. But we're setting invitations, so first meeting should happen later this year, hopefully. So just one positive step that we're taking. Thank you.
My name's Randy Indicott, and I live at three three six eight Willam Road, Fostoria. I'm just gonna start off with, I'm not yelling, I just talk loud, okay? So...
I'm hard here, so that's okay.
That's all right. So am I. That's why I talk loud. As all this is coming about and everybody's coming in and throwing out ideas and they're being upset about it, I have to say this. Kind of if you look at it like big government, they think taxing everybody is the way to the end of the solution. That's not the way to the end of this solution right here. Because the only people that are gonna get taxed and hurt are the good people that are trying to provide a service in this town. If this passes, for whatever reason it would pass, that's gonna make every landlord in this town wanna sell their houses. You're gonna drive rental properties out of this town, which is gonna drive people out of this town. Is that what Fostoria is trying to do here? No. You wanna bring people to this town to live here, to prosper here, to work here. You don't wanna run them out of here. And as far as talking about the houses themselves and all the things that have been said, you know, I agree with what this young one said about, you know, the water department's your best line of defense on whether somebody's got water in their house or not. And whether or not an owner pays the water bill or the tenant pays that water bill, all that information's right downstairs in that water department office. It's not... And it should be brought to public record. If you wanna find out if somebody doesn't have water in their home, there's your first way of finding out. As far as smoke detectors, I agree, there should be a smoke detector in every room in every house, not only for rental houses, but for private citizens and all. But my question is, you force the landlords and whatever to put them in, which I myself don't object to, how are you gonna make the tenant check the battery? How are you gonna make the tenant, you know, if it keeps going off when they're cooking dinner and they decide they're gonna pull the battery out? How is that helping Fostoria? How is that helping this situation? Because you're not doing anything to have them stay within the guidelines and have a working smoke detector in the house. And, I mean, I don't know about the other landlords or whatever, but my better half and I, every time we do anything with a house, we just purchased one, first thing's the roof, second thing's put in a new water heater, have Drols Refrigeration come and check out the furnace. We don't do it halfway. We do it all right. If the house needs sited, it gets sited. If it needs painted, it gets painted. We don't... I don't know about anybody else, but I ride around town and look at our rentals constantly. I'm not one of them, just, "Oh, sit back and let's collect the bunny and uh-uh." It's... I ride around, if they have, you know, grass needs mowed, I'll text them, say, "You need to get on, mow your grass while the, you know, zoning department comes around." Or if they need weeds pulled out of their flower beds, whatever. But I find it hard to sit and wanna hear that I'm gonna be taxed for something when I'm trying to do the right thing here, when I've called zoning dozens of times, talked to city workers that are out there, and told them about problem areas in this town that are the city's responsibility of taking care of, but nothing ever gets done about them. But boy, you let weeds get a little high on one of my properties and whatever, and I'm gonna get a notice from the zoning department. It needs to be fair across the board. And like I said, I can give addresses of where these places are at and who I've spoken to with the city as far as the city workers to try and get something done. You have an intersection down at Fremont and Sandusky Street, you can't see the traffic coming into town on Sandusky Street because there's a bunch of trees hanging over into the road and everything, you can't see. You know what the answer was I got? Well, that's railroad property. Well, there's no more railroad there. The last time I checked, you know, it should be whether it's a safety situation or not. When you can't see traffic coming into town on Sandusky Street, that's a possible accident area. And I'm not trying to veer off subject here, I'm just trying to cite an example of, everybody needs to clean up their own backyards. Everybody needs to put a little bit better concerted effort into doing things the right way, and trying to throw attacks on people that are doing it the right way is definitely not the way to do it. And I'm against this totally, and I don't know anybody that is for this. But I understand the people, and they're calling it targeting. I call it, call a spade a spade. If you're not doing right, you're the one gonna get in trouble for it, and that's how it should be. If the good ones are doing what they're supposed to be doing, they shouldn't be punished for it because of somebody else over here not doing it right. You need to find something that will take it to those people in order to make them do the right thing. Like the gentleman said earlier, twenty-four-hour notice to enter a home. Every landlord has that right. It's on the books. You don't need anything other than that. It's a twenty-four-hour notice, and you tell the city or tell the landlord from the city, "We want, you know, to enter this property." And it just tells you, if they don't cooperate with you, there's something shady going on there that you need to look at. But the good people don't need to pay a price for the bad ones. So thank you for your time. So thank you for your time.
My name's Joanne White, 140 East Lidle Street. I would have no problem registering our properties, but I need a little good faith from the city first. You want to assess fines and fees with all these consequences when the city does not even use their zoning department? There are obvious eyesores in this town. How many citations have they been issued? What's the process that's taken once those citations are issued? I see nothing happening, and yet you just want to come and charge us. I need some good faith from the city before I cooperate. That's all I've got to say.
Bob Podak, 325 Perry. I'm, I know the procedure that's probably going to happen with this whole thing. It's probably going to be taken off the table, and then it's going to be voted on and voted down and got rid of. It was an idiot idea to come up with to begin with. There wasn't a lot of homework done on it. And whoever done it wasted city money. I've been doing Medicare for senior citizens for, since 1990. This year, I have to record every phone call or every conversation I have with any of those 400 clients that I have. You want to know why? Because the people behind the scenes of J.J. Walker and Joe Namath, who you see on TV every night, somebody somewhere sold somebody a bill of goods that they weren't supposed to have. Now, since 1990, I've never had a complaint on me for what I do. But yet, I got to pay $40 a month to have all the phone calls recorded and all the conversations recorded. Because somebody did something wrong. And I'm sure it was more like the 97 to 3 rule. 3% were wrong somewhere, but yet the government came down and put it on, all Medicare agents doing what I do. It's wrong, this is wrong. If you've got a problem in this town, you've got a law director, you've got a safety service director, you've got a zoning department, get your ass to work! And get rid of these guys that aren't doing their job, or women, and fix the problem. Don't take it out on Bob. Don't take it out on Sam, or Joy, or anyone else who has properties in town that are pristine. And to leave it go, for you to allow the administration to bring this to console, that's even worse.
We didn't allow it, it happened.
Well, yeah. Well, you're going to have to take care of it, and I know what you're going to do with it. Because if you don't, there'll be a lot of repercussions. So my point is, is that nobody's watching the hen house here. But everybody wants to complain. I know there's properties in town that need work on. The Circle K at the corner of the point out there almost got a zoning thing because they didn't mow their grass this spring. The contractor didn't show up, is what I heard. So, you know, you've got to be a little bit creative with this whole thing. But to start taxing people and put a whole bunch of rules in effect when you already have them, this, you know, it's a waste of money and time. And it's too bad we all had to come here tonight to know that and voice our opinions on it. Thank you.
With that, I'd like to make a statement. Council didn't ask for this. The administration brought the ordinance to council. We didn't have any knowledge to it come to our, on our table. Period. So it's the administration brought that to council. It's not council's fault that we have this. So that's why we're here getting questions and answers right now. So we know what's going on out there and what needs to be done. And hopefully, they're listening and can fix it.
I think I want to thank the council members for listening to everything that we had to say tonight, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. You have anything, say, write your name down, write your name and sign it.
Okay.
Before you speak.
I'm here today, my name is Sylvia Kirroba. I live at 736 Spruce Street. And my concern is the tree on my lawn, which is the town's property, I guess, that is on the town's site that they got to trim it. And the limb is coming down every time it gets blown down and it gets closer. So I have to move my car up so the tree don't fall on my vehicle. So I was wondering if you could either cut it? Because I asked already, like, maybe six months ago, I asked the zoning person, and she said there was nothing she could do about it. So I'm here just to see if you could take care of that problem for me.
Then you have to talk to the administration.
I'll get your address.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. That was my question, and thank you. Thank you.
Tom, I forgot one thing. I have heard some undertow and some information was given to me that we had some landlords in town who are bringing in people who are non-citizens or immigrants. And they're putting, they're splitting rooms in houses. They're putting more than the amount of people that should be in any one house, in houses. And it's happened in this town. I don't know if they're aware of it or not.
I've never heard that yet.
Well, this came from a pretty reliable source.
Okay.
So I think I'd be a little more concerned about that than what we're having to deal with or not.
Okay, thank you.
First it was Martha Vineyard, now it's Fosteria.
I've got better water than Martha's Vineyard.
I wouldn't know, I've never drank the water there, I'm just a poor trucker.
Hi, my name's Tracy Ickes. I live at 16644 Sandridge Road, Bowling Green. We buy, like, foreclosures that are, like, ready to be tore down, and we rebuild them, and then you raise our taxes. You know, my, so that already adds one expense. Our assurances go up. Any, I'm not sure about one of these resties people, but if this is going to be another expense, my thought is it's just going to get passed on to the tenants. You know, that's just going to raise, everybody's renting this town $50 to $100 a month. That's my biggest fear, because, you know, I've talked to my tenants, and, you know, we, we try not to raise our rents. But after a few years, you know, your taxes go up, taxes go up, you know, you have to do something, you know? So, you know, that's my, my biggest issue with it is because any expense that gets passed on to me is going to eventually have to trickle down. So, anything else?
Lisa Ickes, 16644 Sandridge Road. My thing, our tenants, you know, we keep in contact. We do, every three months, we change their furnace filters. We drive by their property. If we don't like it, we get on them, you know, you got to keep bugging them, but they do. My thing is, is we have good tenants. And if we have to continue to pass on this cost, you know, a lot of people are living paycheck to paycheck. And it's going to be a struggle for them to pay more rent. But it has to get passed on. Like my husband said, we've had properties for 10, 11 years, and we just now raised them $25. Well, that $25 a month isn't going to apparently cover what is going to be happening here. This is our first, we just heard about this a couple of weeks ago. And we've heard that there was a council meeting, so we came, but...
And I mean, and you drive around in these neighborhoods, you know which houses are bad, you know?
And you know what landlords...
You know, you can see the areas in this town that are the white. That's our issue, is why not just be like, all right, we know this is a dump. We want to come in, we want to see what's going on. You know, instead of just, like, because I mean, there's hundreds of houses. How are you ever going to be able to police all of these houses? Without, you going to start a whole another department now for this? I mean, what I guess would be the end game plan for this?
My thing, you already have, like, a lot of them already said, you already have things in place. If furnaces don't work, if roof leaks, you put your rent escrow. You know, you already have everything in place. Just, you know, I don't know, do people do that? I mean, our tenants, our houses are nice. We buy these houses, and these were people that lived there. They weren't landlords, they were regular citizens of Fosteria. Their furnaces don't work, they have, you know, their hot water heaters don't work. We've gone in, we put all new in. So to me, it's like you're going after the landlords, but what about the other private citizens in the town that are living in mold and filth? It's not the same, it's not the same. You're targeting the good landlords when you know who the bad are. Thank you.
Judy Baldwin, 1309 Columbus Avenue. I guess my, my thing would be how you're planning on implementing this? Because my guess would be, you would pick all the easy ones to do that are all nice first, and neither they pass or they don't. And they might not pass the furnace in the summer because people don't pay for gas in the summer. If they know they have to pay a base fee for gas, they, they turn it off. So how are you going to test a gas furnace in the summer, number one? I guess my biggest question to you would be, if you implement this, how is that going to help you fix the bad ones? Because they're not in compliance now. Why is having to register going to put them in compliance? Other than you're going to, at some point in time, test them or go out and look at their properties, and obviously, they'll fail. But that should have been done already, ahead of time. Because you already know they're bad. So I, I feel like this is a rolling drum that you're just going to keep on rolling, and, and the good people will get hurt, and the tenants will get hurt. And the bad people that are so minor are still going to be out doing their thing. And it's not going to change by having this legislation. I, I just don't understand how that's going to make it any better. That's all, thanks.
Any other comment from the public?
I think you heard enough.
I think we got enough information, the council should be able to work with us. So...
But then, we're not against you cleaning the town up, we're not.
We, we understand that. Is there anything else, Mr. Renau?
I'd just say thank you for coming out. We wanted to hear what you had to say. I think you delivered a pretty strong message. So we will take it under consideration and see where we go from here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we all are in agreement that we've got things to fix in Fosteria.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
So when's the next meeting and whatever? Because this is up for, it's uncapped, up for a third thing where it can be voted on. So when's the next meeting?
It's, it's, it's tabled, and it will stay tabled until we're ready to pull it off the table. So we've got work to do, so I wouldn't anticipate anything happening soon. And when it comes off the table, it will not be third reading.
It'll be second. I was told that by a council member, so it'll be the second.
No, it would be the second reading. It would not be the third reading, it would be second reading. It's only been read once.
Yeah.
And it was tabled.
Just a quick clarified question. You're not going to make this an emergency read, are you?
No.
No, absolutely not.
This is going to take mo, can I speak now? Realistically, this is going to take months. This is not a quick fix. As I was trying to explain before, I think we all are in agreement that we've got a great community, we've got problems we need to address. This is the first step. And I know there's been a lot of commentary, a lot of pain on this, but it's a starting point. And I think at the end of the process, we will all probably part ways happy. I think that when the final product's done, it'll be something everyone can live with and be happy about. That's all I got to say.
I'm confused what we're tabling if it's been so negatively received. It's been negatively received online? There is not a single person who positively spoke about it here today? Nor the last meeting? Why keep it on the table if we're telling you it's a garbage idea?
Because we're going to get this thing fixed, and we're going to start sprucing up this community, that's why.
So is that the reason to do this? Because you want the money from us, the landlords, to pay this?
This hearing is terminated. We're not going to keep talking about it for the next hour. We heard you, you spoke. It's up to us what we do from here. And we're in no rush to take it off the table.
Of course not.